Budget, just a comment. I've never, ever seen a budget presented with virtually out, without any narrative virtually whatsoever. No average citizen can possibly know what they are reading. No line items have explanation. It really makes you feel like you're trying to hide something. Every town and municipality explains their budget. This town does not. Every town hosts their agendas and the backup to those agendas. This town does not. Every town posts their minutes. This town does not. I do believe, and I'm going to check with Mr. Freeman in the New York State Department of State, that this town violates the open meetings law. But I digress. Let me get back to the budget. I'd like to, first with regard to the budget, I'd like to address the rampant nepotism on the payroll for this town. A simple search finds that almost all, almost all of you have family on the payroll. Last meeting, Councilman McEnroe and Kasek Jono admitted that they have their wives on the payroll. Upon further review, you see a vendetta on the payroll that other than yourself...
Who's the other vendetta?
Rose Vendetta. We have three separate Genovas on the payroll. Mr. Stefanic has his wife on the payroll at $64,000. Attorney Swanson's husband at over $70,000. With Mr. Marx's family, Mr. Altadonna's family. It seems like wherever you look through that town payroll, there are family members of both elected and appointed town officials. And it makes you think, you know, wonder. Were these family members vetted against other applicants? And they found to be the most qualified for their jobs? The town makes ERS. And for those who don't know what ERS is, the Employee Retirement System. The town makes ERS payments on their behalf. Not too long ago, those ERS payments were 18% of someone's salary.
Mr. Fryer, I just wanted to ask you. You come on board.
When you...
You come on board if you want to.
I asked that I not be interrupted. You can run when I'm done. No, when I'm done, I'll be able to add to questions.
Hold on, let's go slow. We'll talk about the rest of the question.
I just wanted to know, he brought up the ERS. He brought up a lot of town employees. I just wanted to know if Mr. Fryer is elected. Is it his position that all of the employees he mentioned, or that any of the employees that we currently have working will be let go under his administration?
We'll hold the question because I have a few. I just have a few questions for you, so you continue.
Now, would you cut the ERS? It's another great question.
Is that a perk that comes with your jobs? That you get to hire your families? Do they, also a question. Do they collect an extra $10,000 per year for opting out of their medical insurance? Because they already get it from you. How can you look at the people who elected you and face them and explain that so many family members are on the town payroll? With regard to the preliminary budget that you adopted for 2016, why should we believe you when we have seen this story before? It seems awfully convenient when you are up for reelection to keep saying that this is the final budget without adopting it before Election Day. Now, I heard you say before that you're going to adopt it and vote on this. So it will be the adopted budget before election. I hope that will be the case. So you cannot change it after Election Day. Because that's what's fair to the voters to see. So they can vote based on the record. I've been examining the proposed budget. The town went from an outstanding debt in 2010 of $672 million to a staggering debt of $840 million in 2015, over 25%. Directly out of your offering statement online, the town went from a debt service of $55 million in 2013 to $81 million in 2015. Long-term debt has gone from $451 million in 2013 to $770 million in 2015. Your proposed budget, as the gentleman just said, is attempting to lower the debt. But you're lowering the debt service based on what you published, from $81 million to $80 million in 2016, a paltry $1 million. Okay? That, to me, that's the kind of a move that in an election year insults the intelligence of the taxpayers. If you're not raising taxes and you're giving out 3% salary increases plus absorbing increases in health care and ERS costs, what are you getting, where are you getting the money from? What maintenance and other costs are the town deferring? Are the roads, are the infrastructure going to suffer? What work are the contractors that generously contributed to your campaigns are they going to miss out on? I also noticed, I also noticed that the town borrowed $21 million since 2011 to fund ERS payments. Did the town make the full ERS payment this year? Or did they borrow it again? And maybe you can answer that.
Why don't you finish your statement? You've got a lot to talk about.
These are part of the town's long-term liabilities that are actually not even reflected in the town's debt. These payments are obligated through 2027. How much more are you going to add to the borrowing you've already done to meet these obligations? I also noticed that there's $500,000 added to the town's attorney's budget. Are you going to add more attorneys like Len Genova, who is under investigation for unreported contributions from his political club? How much more of our money are you planning to spend on outside counsel to defend yourself against litigation for the illegal loan guarantees that you and the board unanimously voted on and signed? During your tenure as supervisor, you overseen eight bond ratings, bond rating downgrades. That's truly remarkable. Under your watch, the town went from a AAA rating to a current rating of just above junk status. We will almost certainly be downgraded to junk status after the current investigations are complete. How is this going to affect the cost of borrowing? Yet you call yourself a fiscal conservative. I ask you once again, and I'm holding you, I'm taking you at your word at this, that you adopt this budget and vote on it before Election Day. So we don't, you know, so we don't assume that this is just another pre-election stunt like last year, when you presented a zero in budget increase before Election Day and then unanimously voted on a nearly 10% increase without any public input at the first meeting after Election Day. At the last, oh, that's really all I have to say with regarding the budget.
All right. So now, I don't even know where to begin. I don't know that a single statement you made is accurate.
It never does.
Well, let me just start. And now, Kim, you want to say something, Bob? I know you have things to say, Rebecca. Let's start real simple. Because you have, you and other speakers in your hill have this habit of coming, like we just heard Mr. Rippe before. Oh, it was done three or four times. Well, it wasn't ever done.
What was it ever done?
You were talking about the turf field. Were you listening?
Well, I didn't say I don't know turf field.
You had the opportunity to speak. It's our turf field, okay? But you have a tendency to do, you come out and you start saying, every town in the world does it this way, but you do it that way. Robert?
I don't think every town does that.
I know, I don't, I don't. I don't think so either. And what, do we use a methodology as widely recommended and accepted in terms of our budget reporting?
Well, it's near a state or county person.
You start out on a, you start building a house without a foundation. You make all these wild allegations. We haven't even started yet. Hey, we're just on your first sentence. I mean, it's just insane. It's just insane. Well, we have to tolerate. We have to go ahead and move it around. Let's cover all the parts.
Well, no, I think, I do have, I want to procure some commitments for Mr. Fryer. I think it's important to note that he is a candidate for county council that's running this year against us. I mean, we go crazy and say that he's a resident who does not have a political motive. But what I think is interesting, you know, you talked about inaccuracies and slinging allegations. And I wanted to show, I don't know if anyone else on the board has seen this. This is from Mr. Fryer, as well as the town supervisor's candidate's Facebook page. And he shared this. And I guess it's supposed to be funny. It's from a movie that's over 20 years old, so I don't know how timely it is. But it says on here that last year's supervisor, you voted yourself a 12% raise. Now, I realize that our budgets may be difficult to get through, but did you check to make sure that was true, Mr. Fryer?
That was actually...
Excuse me, I was asked to yell that out.
Oh, sorry, Rebecca.
Well, no, no, Bob. We respected your right to complete the statements. Now, you listen to what we have to say. We listen to you.
Before you shared this with your dozens of supporters on Facebook and your colleague running also, supervisor, shared it with his colleagues. And you commented that it was awesome. And he asked if there were hard copies to hand out. Did you check to make sure the facts were accurate?
Those, that was actually a repost from a couple of years ago.
Oh, did you stay on there that it was a repost?
Yes, I did, Rebecca.
Oh, that's funny. I have the Facebook page.
Rebecca, did you read from the minutes? Rebecca, did you read from the scoreboard minutes from this week? Stop lying on the record, Rebecca. Rebecca, stop lying.
We do interrupt you. Let it make its thing.
I am so glad you brought it up. I think it's great. I have the minutes in front of me from July 15, 2018. And I'll read them. Because, Mr. Fryer, you were appointed in a special session that did not take place in a regular room where the school board met.
Show the public that this is the minutes. Show the public.
Bob.
Don't lie, Rebecca.
Robert.
Those are not minutes.
Rebecca, and hold on, hold on.
What does that have to do with the budget?
And what does that have to do with the budget?
Robert, Robert. We let you speak uninterrupted at your request. We were respectful, we were civil, we listened. Now, allow her to finish her comment. Believe me, it hurt, it hurt our ears listening to the thing.
Oh.
But we sat in a very courteous manner and listened to everything you said. We already, we didn't get past the first sentence yet. You know, there's an old, when a judge charges a jury after a case, he says to the jury, if any witness before you, if you find that any witness before you lied about any one thing, one thing, you can dismiss that witness's testimony in its entirety, in its entirety if you choose to do so. The thing being that if someone lies about one thing, they'll certainly lie about other things. So you're off to a shame to start. Rebecca, do you want to complete your...
I don't know where to, I mean, I feel like we've got a couple of things going on. Let's start with, since he brought it up. Board of Education, East Wilston Union Free School District, Town of North Hempstead, minutes for special session of the Board of Education on July 15, 2008. A special session of the Board of Education of the East Wilston UFSD was held on Tuesday, July 15, 2008, in Room 450 at the Wheatley School. President Ritz called the meeting to order at 8:12 PM. Then, as a present, people who are present. Action item, pursuant to education law 1709, 1804, 2502, recommendation to appoint Robert Fryer for the unexpired term of David Wasserman's seat, which runs through June 30, 2009. It was moved to accept. It was seconded. It carried three to one. One of your colleagues did vote against your appointment. The meeting opened at 8:12 and was closed at 8:17 PM and did not take place in the board room or the rest of the meeting. So you called me a liar, and I would like an apology.
You are a liar. You're, you're, you are a liar.
Hey! Cut it out. We have a right to listen.
You were in last week. That, did, that, first of all, board meetings do not take place in board rooms. Board meetings take place in public sessions. That took place in a public session, okay? You said, "I was appointed in a five-minute meeting in another room upstairs," okay? For your information, first of all, you were appointed too originally, and we all know why.
And managed successfully, Robert, and not unopposed like you.
And Robert, Robert, Rebecca, I, again, make notes. And the thing where we're reacting...
This is not, this is supposed to be a budget hearing, so I'm, you know...
Well, so let's return to, let's, let's...
One second, please. Robert, no, no, listen to me. We all, when you were talking, we all made our notes and we waited patiently to respond to you. I'm going to ask you to do the same thing.
Let's talk about the budget.
All right. I would like to...
Okay, but, but please, don't interrupt the speaker. Let her finish. And then you can, you'll have an opportunity to say something.
So, no, I'm sorry. Part of Mr. Fryer's commentary does include these Facebook posts, which he indicated that he distinguished as being old pictures. But that is nowhere to be found.
But the quote from you was actually...
Robert, I finished.
Wow! Let her finish.
Please, I'm asking you a question like that, too.
He's allowed to answer them.
He's going to have an amp, Robert. He's going to have to, we'll stay here for a piece. And listen to it. All I'm saying is just wait, the way we turn this, respectfully, listen to you. Let her finish.
I, I don't, oh, that's okay. I don't really want to talk about it anymore. It's here. He didn't say it was old. He disseminated it as if it were new information. And I guess that's something that we might expect if we elect Mr. Fryer, that he will disprove the residents with misinformation. So before I conclude, I want to ask you one other question. You have a lot of complaints about employees that are currently on the payroll and benefits that they receive. I want to know, if you are elected, is it your intent to let these employees go and to take away their benefits?
My intention, if I'm elected, is that, no, no family members, like so many people who work in this town and who are elected for this town, that, yeah, those people should not be employed here.
So you will let them go?
Because they are employed here. They are employed here.
Why can't they work here? They live here. Why can't they work here? They live here.
That's good. Can you listen?
What are you laughing about, Bob?
Were these family guys?
It's never...
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, on both sides of the issue. I'm not going to tolerate much longer. I'm not going to tolerate much longer. Many of you know me, smiling John, and we let people speak what we want. And we will. We will stay here as long as it takes to get out everybody's thoughts. But I really can't tolerate the cross debate, the shouting out loud, the shouting over the head. Did you ask a question?
I just, I want a commitment to whether you are, if you're elected, people who are currently working here go.
Bob, did you answer the question?
No.
No, the answer to your question is no. But yes, to the family, if I can, to the family members of the elected and appointed officials who got the jobs simply because they're family members, not because they were found to be the most qualified for the job.
All right, that's your answer.
I guess, Supervisor, I would have to go because my son started in 2009 and I'm following in his footsteps. And yes, he is qualified. And no, he does not take the benefits. He pays for his own benefits because it's the right thing to do. When you make these statements, Mr. Fryer, please do your homework because you embarrass yourself in front of everyone here. Like you have some revelation. Okay, there is no revelations. Okay, we do not hide from the truth. Newsday asked me. They asked me, do you have a son that works for the town? Absolutely. I'm proud of my son. I had a very successful business. And we sat down and we talked about it. And he wanted to go into public service like each and every one of us here, to serve the people. It's not always self-serving, Mr. Fryer. So remember that. Thank you.
Bob, before I give it over to Bob McEvoy for the little more technical aspect of this, can I go sit down? No, what did you say? You may want to have other things to say. I think you need to sit down. You don't feel that way?
No, I feel fine.
I don't want to be standing in front of you.
No, I'm not ready for you.
I'm ready to go. Okay, go ahead. But in response to some of the things that Mr. Fryer said before I give it over to Bob, to Bob McEvoy, I guess we'll start with the employment situation. Yes, there are relatives who sit on this town, who are on this town board. Their relatives work for the Town of Oyster Bay. I think there are relatives of some people in the audience who also work for the Town of Oyster Bay. When you, when you set up an administration, you try to surround yourself with people who you're comfortable with, people who think the way you do. We have 1,200 employees in the town. And we've been very, very balanced in the hiring, is that, that... Former town supervisor, Democrat supervisor, I happen to be Republican. A former town supervisor, Democrat supervisor evolving, was appointed to our zoning board of appeals. Members of his staff, after the supervisor, supervisor evolving left office, members of his staff, his key people, Chuck Johnson, Kevin Langberg, all Democrats, all hardcore Democrats, who worked hard against us, you know, to defeat us politically over the years as we worked against them. But they remained with the Town of Oyster Bay because they were good employees. And the relatives of some of the people that, you know, thought that you were smirching happened to be very, very good employees too. You know, they, it's not always easy being the relative. There's a bit of a target on you back. You better be a good employee and do the right thing. You're kind of leaving that out too. We have fine members of the conservative persuasion, the independent persuasion, the working families party persuasion. We have not limited, we have not made decisions solely on politics. I don't want to name the names. I don't know if that's a nice thing to do to the people and mark them. But I, opponents who ran against me work for the Town of Oyster Bay. People who ran against me directly for town supervisor, and we took the months off and had same fight and knockdown. Every year, it's the same rhetoric, by the way, folks. There's nothing new in this dialogue. Every two years, we have to live with, you know, someone, kind of like a cuckoo clock. Every two years, they come out, stick their head out. And they say this, and they say this. This message, this message that Rebecca showed me, maybe it was an old one. You can't tell the difference. It was the same message in '07, '09, '11, '13, same nonsense. This one says, "I took the 12% raise last year." I just tell everybody in this room, I didn't get the 12% raise. I think the last time my salary changed was in 2009, like, 2010, if my memory is correct. But this business about, you hire people that you trust. You hire people that do the right thing, that think the way you do, and you implement, and will implement the programs that you want implemented for the town. And they've done one heck of a job. I've got a workforce that's second to none. The number, we have 1,200 people in the town. The number of relatives of town employees who are in that is relatively small. I don't know, I really don't know the percentage off the top of my head. But if we have 1,200 employees, if anybody, by the mind's eye, is it 1%, 2%? Okay. But when you, when you hear this, when you hear this like, "Oh, my God, you have so many employees." I have never, I have never had a teenager come to me and ask for... All due respect, Supervisor, I don't think anybody in this room is questioning you. No, I know that. Or your staff. There might be a few that want to know, but I don't think anybody, anybody knows. There's nobody here questioning you. You're pretty great. I appreciate that. And I don't, I don't want to mess that up like that.
And you allowed that call, but when other people call that, you didn't allow it.
He allowed him calling her a liar too. Only because she is, man. Okay, so evil. Yeah, don't tell me to shut up. I'm not your husband. She's not going to tell me to shut up.
And you, so can I.
I watched, I have never had, I have like, hey, please.
If you both leave.
If you both...
If you both have to leave.
Yeah, I'll walk out when I'm...
Rob, Rob.
I want to hear. I want to hear what you have to say.
I'm trying to finish. I don't want to be distracted by that. I don't, I have never had a teenager come to me and ask for a summer job, but I don't think I've ever said no in 18 years. I don't know what you're doing. I have never said no to a young person. I have never, I don't know what that political persuasion is. But if it's a young person who wants to be involved in government, they're welcome in the Town of Oyster Bay. I have never said no to a returning veteran who is looking for a job without the thought of political persuasion or anything of the sort. The fact that there are family members that work for the Town of Oyster Bay is something I think you would see most everywhere. They turn out to be very good employees, very conscientious employees, as is the rest of my workforce. You know, we talked about 90% of the people love living in this town. Let's not forget who gets the work done and who makes the roads so nice, who makes the parks so nice, who maintains the quality of life from the building department to the parks department, to the highway department, and right on down the line. So enough of that. What I want to do though is, Bob, I don't know where you went. You talked about, you talked about spending. And much like Robert, like Robert Rippe before, they asked me the same question. I have a litany here, it would take too long to read, of all of the things that that money was spent on, all the, all the spending that you're criticizing. I have a litany of things that the money was used for. And I might add, it was done in partnership, it was done in partnership with our residents. Let me just get out, shorten this. I guess, I'm sure you're aware, we've had, Bob, are you listening?
Yeah.
I'm sure you're aware that we've had three environmental bond acts in this town. And by the way, I came into office, in the Town of Oyster Bay, of all places, there was never an environmental bond act. That's funny that you say to the public, "We have permission to spend this money on improving our environment, wiring up the space, refurbishing parks, whatever." It was never done in the Town of Oyster Bay. And it was done nationwide, in every municipality all throughout, starting in the 80s and 90s. Never done in the Town of Oyster Bay. And we asked for three of them for our residents, two for $30 million and one for $60 million. And the residents vote on this and all pre-passed with more than 70% of the budget. Residents wanted this in the Town of Oyster Bay. And how was the money used? How was the money spent? I'll leave out the little plain edge. For the first time, they have a community park. Never had one before. Robbins Lane Community Center, a park, I mean, state of God, as good as it gets. Allen Park in Farmingdale, those of you who live with me in that district. Does anybody remember Allen Park? And when the EPA was there and we were afraid to drink the water? And a little old Town of Oyster Bay stepped up to the tune of many, many millions of dollars and cleaned it up for park purposes and doubled the size of the park. And the day will come when that park will be the centerpiece of the town park system. The Liptowers there, 26 acres over in East Norwich. How about, anybody been to TR Parkland and seen the improvements there? Hicksville, for the first time, has a town park, actually two, if you count A-11 Field, A-11 Field, along with the Hicksville Community Center and Hicksville Athletic Center. Anybody been to the Bethpage High School?
I bet.
Absolutely.
Okay. The Eight Path Community Center, Walker Park over in Hicksville, Marino Field, Morella Field over at Bethpage. I mean, the list goes on and on. I'm not going to, I'm not going to continue to punish you with this. But Bob, I'm going to ask you a question.
You build great parks, John.
Bob, no, no, but that's where the money land. And I'm going to ask you a question. Because I think Bob is going to tell you later that while it's easy to alarm people by saying, "Oh, the debt is $600 million." Yeah, $700 million. Yeah. I will never have $700 million in my lifetime. That's a lot of money. But relatively speaking, for a town of this size, with this town, with these, this tax base, even our bonding, bond rating agencies say our debt is, quote, "moderate." Well within the ability of this town to handle. So again, when you shout out these numbers and try to frighten people and try to disparage the town, all you're doing is hurting the town by making people outside the town think, "Oh, Oyster Bay's a bad place. I wouldn't want to live there." And then next thing you know, property that I just built this way.
Can you say something about the property?
Hold on a second, hold on a second. But Bob, I have a question for you. I have a question for you. You know all the work that the town did until you studied it. I need you to stand up and publicly say, what work, what parks would you not have built? What roads would you not have repaired? What community centers would you not have built? Stand up, come to that podium and say, Supervisor, I would not have done A, B, C, D, and E. Let the residents out there know what life will be like in terms of the infrastructure if you have anything to say about it. Look them in the eyes and say, "No, I wouldn't have built the Field of Dreams. No, I wouldn't have refurbished TR Park or John J. Burns Park or Sayas and Woodburn Community Park." Stand up and say how that money should not have been spent.
John, I'm not gonna do that at this time, but I'll tell you that you don't spend money you don't have. And that, and you call yourself a fiscal conservative, but the fact of the matter is, you talk about paying down the debt. You're paying it down $1 million.
Now you're being repetitious.
Right, so...
So you're not gonna answer the question.
So, don't, you know, you talk about things. You build great parks, John, I'll give you that. And if, and if the administration should change, you know, maybe you should be the Parks Commissioner, because you do build great parks. So, congratulations on that.
I had a feeling you had a question, because you don't...
You don't answer any of my questions, John.
You don't fool, you don't fool well.
Yeah.
What are you gonna stop on?
You don't tell the truth.
What are you gonna stop on? And what are you gonna stop calling people liars and vile and vulgar names and behave like a gentleman?
Vulgar names?
And if you really were, you know what? If you really were a man, you would come to that podium and look them in the eyes, and you would say, "Supervisor, I would not have built these parks." But you can't say that and answer the question by not answering it.
There you go.
So having said that, and by the way, by the way... By the way, I don't know how many people, I don't be rude now when I'm talking.
What are you, a sly, what's up?
What are you, what are you...
Shut up.
Come on.
Don't tell me, shut up, I told you to walk.
Why don't you...
Stop, stop, stop.
Supervisor, control your viewer that might to address the board. Please fill out a form as everybody else does, and you may address the board. I'm gonna ask you to leave the room.
Okay, fair enough. Why do we do this? Mr. McAvoy, you have some things to say in response.
Yeah, he, he was in the mic. The debt service referred to Mr. Fryer as, quote, "principal and interest", and that is a $1 million difference, but...
Mist truths about me on the record and the people you supposedly represent. I believe it has gotten to the point that you actually believe your own mistruths, and the pressure is causing you to somewhat come apart. Are you proud of the way that this public meeting was conducted? I believe that even your biggest supporters, after watching that video, would be disgusted. As Newsday commented in their editorial section, "It was a shameful episode for a town government that's begun to make shameful episodes a habit." At the last town meeting, you said that I was actually the cause of lower property values and that I wanted the, I wanted the town to fail just so I could win. I can assure you, John, that that is nothing further from the truth. I want to see our town flourish and to be a lighthouse municipality, a town that all other municipalities can look to as an example of a well-run government. I didn't decide to run because I needed the job. I decided to run because I couldn't sit on the sidelines any longer and watch you and this board in a race with Nassau County to see who can go bankrupt first. Thank you.
Bob, don't go away. Yeah, let me just, very interesting the way, the way to put these statements together. There's a part of the story missing. You know, you talk about mistruths, but sometimes nondisclosure is much uglier than mistruth. And what you're leaving out of the story is that every resident in this room should hear this, because you didn't read it anywhere, and you didn't hear it. Last, what was, most of them on there before the last town meeting, 28? On the afternoon of Monday, September 28, I start getting, and other elected officials and other town officials started getting phone calls. Started making phone calls to me and saying, "Supervisor, what's going on?" I just got a robo-call from, I'm not even sure who it was. I'll listen to you, I'll describe it again, turn it out to you. Town-wide robo-calls were placed by Mr. Fryer, exhorting residents to come up, and I don't know what the word, ambush, berate, attack, whatever it is your plan was. Wanted residents to converge in this room, and for political gain, obviously, attack the town board. I never heard of such a thing. Not only did it embarrassingly backfire, but the people who, apparently the way it was done, he was calling people of his own political party. But when you do that, not everybody in the house is registered the same way. So people of opposing political parties were also getting the message and calling and saying, "What the heck is going on? Is there some problems, Supervisor, up at Town Hall? We'll, we'll come up there and, you know, we'll talk in favor of the town board." And the people who got the calls said, "By all means, come on up if that kind of nonsense is going on." I mean, in the 350-year-old history of this town, I never heard of, well, they didn't have telephones all during that period, but I never heard of such a thing. I never heard of someone coming up, someone making robo-calls and exhorting people to come to the town board to say starless things. And it's so embarrassingly backfired on this gentleman. You know how many people came in response to the robo-call?
Zero.
Zero. Not one, not five, not 10, literally zero. You know how many people came because they got the robo-call? And they came to the defense of the town board? Those are the people that, that Mr. Fryer was describing as raffle or whatever.
Do you feel the way you ran the meeting was professional?
Whatever, whatever he's saying. Those people came up here, fired up, in order to protect the town board. So, Mr. Fryer, you started it.
Do you feel that you kept order during the meeting?
You started it, you are the one who really brought those people up here.
Did you keep, did you, did you keep order during the meeting?
Through your misguided effort to ambush the town.
Can you answer the question? Did you keep order during the meeting?
I've said all I'm going to say.
So you want to answer the question?
You and I both have a...
Thanks, Supervisor, because I know that you're often not given credit for the things that you do. And I think it's interesting that, at least in the time, I think as long as any of us have been on the board, in fact, as long as you've been sitting here, unlike many other municipalities, we have never had an egg timer. We have never limited anyone who wants to come and address the board on either an agenda item or during public participation. And I think that you should be credited to that, Supervisor, that unlike many other municipalities, you allow people to come up and speak. And I just want to make sure that everyone is aware of that. When we talk about public participation, I think that we've been in very, very good hands. What I think is interesting is that Mr. Fryer, I'm reading from minutes, so just so I don't get called a liar again for no reason. On September 22nd, 2008, when he was on the school board, did make a vote to restrict public, public participation during meetings, in fact, limiting people so that they could not speak during agenda items. And he had a lawsuit as a result of his vote brought against the school district, which I guess they probably had to pay to defend in February 2010. So I just, apparently, he's got a very nasty house when he comes up and goes home.
Rebecca, why don't you read what the Commissioner of Education found in terms of the result of our board decision to make those changes? Why don't you read what the Commissioner of Education said that by what we changed, we actually gave people more of an opportunity to speak in public? That came from the Commissioner of the State of Education, from the state of New York.
President Carberry denying that...
And, and asked, and asked Dr. Lewis, who was sitting there. You also, you also said, "I gave her a $22,000 raise." You spoke mistruths about that as well. So I think, I think if you want to make that, you know, you get your little soundbites in, but why don't you look a little deeper into it and see how we changed the way board meetings are to go, to be virtually like every school district in America to include more open time for people to address us regarding agenda items before and after the meeting. We simply changed it because we were having to stop after every single agenda item, and meetings were going until 2:00 in the morning. But the Commissioner of the Board of Education ruled in our favor that we were, and actually, in his comment, that we were giving people more of an opportunity to speak. So, and, and the gentleman that brought...
When they want to, right?
And the gentleman, and the gentleman that brought that lawsuit brought five additional lawsuits against the school and lost every single one of them as well. So, so you're trying for your little soundbites, but we actually gave it more people opportunity to speak.
I am proud that it's terrific for you to sit out there and talk about soundbites when you've got someone heavily editing every video of you that has come before the public. And I want to address...
No, what was edited, what was edited, what was edited was you taking, using my daughter as an example.
And we could, we could, we could... We can talk about your daughter's position if you want to. I decided not to bring it up today, but if you would like to bring it up, we certainly can.
That was the only thing that was edited.
And let's add to the fact that your daughter is not a minor or a child, she's a grown woman.
When you were talking about her, in that context, she was a minor.
When she got her position with the Plainview Old Bethpage School District, she was a minor?
Yes, she was.
How old is your daughter now?
You're not asking about his daughter.
I'm not answering any more questions about that.
I want to go on the record as saying